Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing, which is to take input from the public on your comments on an ordinance establishing a delay period for the issuance of demolition permits for the purposes of historic preservation. And anyone who would like to comment on this, we have blue forms at the back of the room. You could fill one out with your name and address. And I'll start with Randy Cangus. Would you please come and state your name and address?
I don't think I'm speaking on demolition. I'm speaking on the history.
Oh, okay. I got it on the blue form. Sorry, we have many forms here. Just let me know if you're not speaking on this topic. Carolyn Baxley?
Sorry.
No? Okay. I guess we got a little bit of confusion here. Chris Bertie? Anyone want to speak? You want to speak on demolition?
Sure.
Okay. Please come forward and state your name and address. And keep your remarks to no longer than five minutes, if you can.
My name's Chris Bertie. I live at 411 Western Nevada Street in Urbana. The demolition delay would enable a period of time to do research on the historic value of the house, which is not happening right now. It's just a short period of time in which someone can get a permit, tear down a house. And right now, there's no time at all to, or very little time, to do any research of a house that potentially could be of not only historic significance, but also, like many old houses that we have left in this community, aesthetic significance, or of significance in that having old houses, you know, improve the quality of our life. That's all I have to say about this issue right now.
Thank you very much. Robert Dunn?
Do you need me to state my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. 1910 South Race Street. I'm opposed to the idea of the, a demolition or a delay period for purposes of historic preservation. First of all, I'm not against historic preservation. But at the same time, I think a lot of this discussion is in regards to, you know, one particular area. And I don't think that, you know, one-size-fits-all citywide solution just for the problems in one part of Urbana is going to solve the problems. I really, I really support the idea of historic preservations, but I'm more, what I'm in support of is preserving stuff in like the downtown area. I'd definitely be opposed if someone wanted to go and demolish, say, the Old Methodist Church, or I'm even in opposition to, at the county board level, of the idea of them wanting to, you know, build a new clock tower. Because to me, it's like that clock tower, you know, represents Urbana. And so, but when it comes to, you know, individuals' homes, I think, I don't, and property owners, I don't think that the city should be involved in telling individual property owners, whether they're landlords or owning their own home, what they can and cannot do with their own properties. So, that's all.
Thank you. Danny Otto, you're down for several topics. Would you like to address demolition delay? Thank you.
I'm Danny Otto, 405 West Illinois, and I strongly support the demolition delay. This is probably the least onerous thing that you're considering tonight, because now typically the way things happen is someone who wants to build something new will do all of their planning, get their design drawn up, get their financing lined up, and spend months preparing to do it. And then the last thing they do, just before they knock the building down, is get the permit, and the next several days come and knock it down. All this is requiring them is, at the point you're beginning to plan, which typically takes months to get your financing and so on lined up, you just move up the demolition permit application earlier in your timeline. And you can do that without it affecting, unless the permit ultimately is denied. But it's not going to force someone to have done all of the work, being ready to build, and then find themselves denied. They will quickly learn to file for the permit early on. And the other point on this is, I think that it's important that you maintain the 75-year trigger rather than moving it to 100. Three years ago, I bought a house that was 97 years old that was in jeopardy. And after three years, I'm 90 percent through a restoration. The house mechanically with wiring and all the internal systems is good to go for another 100 years. And it would have been a tragedy if four years ago, just before I came to buy this house, because it wasn't 100 years old, that it could have been knocked down and disappeared. So, I think 75 years is a good trigger.
Thank you. Betsy Cronin?
Hi. Betsy Cronin, 305 West High. I'm here really for all three of the preservation issues. As I see it tonight, there are contradictions in the decisions before you. City staff keeps telling us that we don't need ordinances like demolition delay or neighborhood conservation districts, because it would be far more effective to increase the number of houses that are designated as historic landmarks. So, voila, we have before us tonight an application for the designation of the 800 block of Main Street. Almost all of the owner-occupiers support the designation. The duly-appointed experts on the Historic Preservation Commission are unanimous in their support. Yet it would appear that four of the single-family lots on the block would be exempted. Taken from the October 31 memorandum of the Community Development Department are the following goals: to conserve the unique characteristics of older neighborhoods; to protect the setting and the context of historic landmarks and historic districts. I don't understand how exempting four properties from that one block will accomplish any of those goals. In light of the contentiousness of this application, which seems so obvious to me, these being very important buildings to the history of Urbana, it's clear that in order to preserve what remains of our historic fabric, we do indeed need the protection of ordinances designed to limit such practices as demolition by malign neglect and incompatible infill. As the owner of a 97-year-old house, I can attest to the time and the energy and the money that's required to maintain that. Please don't punish those of us who are willing to take on such a project by not protecting our property values. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Adams?
My name's Brian Adams. I'm from 412 West Elm Street in Urbana. And I just think that the demolition delay is a very good idea, and I support it very highly, and I would hope that the city council would also support it. I think it's, it's a good way to give us the opportunity to, to look closely at some properties that might be historically or architecturally significant that really nobody has considered, or, or, history may have been forgotten, yet these houses may be significant to the city, or even to the nation at some level. And all this would do is give us a little bit bigger window to ascertain whether or not a particular structure was historically or architecturally significant. It may happen that, that it never hap, it happens very rarely, and that's probably what will happen. But for those few examples that are out there that have been forgotten or lost, it would be a chance, if somebody felt the need or the desire to step forward and to research a particular property, this would at least give them that window. So, I support it strongly. Personally, I think that it should, the time limit should be 50 years. I think that some of the post-war, World War II structures are becoming more and more historically significant on many levels. That's just a personal opinion. And I also think that, I have one other point to make. It slipped my mind right now. But anyway, I support, I support the demolition delay ordinance, and I would urge you to pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Comer?
Karen Comer, I'm the Executive Director of the Preservation and Conservation Association. Speaking here in favor of the demolition delay ordinance, I think you have an opportunity here tonight to help preserve some worthy structures in Urbana. Actually, a very unique opportunity to do this. A demolition delay ordinance would give everyone an opportunity to explore possible preservation incentives and promote these to the owner of the property, such as the state's property tax assessment freeze and the federal historic preservation tax credits. Very often, owners of historic properties are not aware of these programs and some other ones that may be out there that could actually help them preserve the house, and this would actually, or structure, give them an opportunity to be acquainted with those and see if that would help with some of their redevelopment plans. It would also give the community as a whole an opportunity to document the structure as a last resort to do photos and a detailed history of the building before it's lost forever, but also to do in-depth research. As we are finding out by many of the recent historic preservation efforts, there are a lot of early figures in Urbana history that have been lost to us. Those people who lived on the Elm Street houses, we recently heard about the Sheldons, who built many of the structures in Urbana with their brickyard, and that Royer was also an architect for one of these buildings that was recently designated. Without the in-depth research that was done to help preserve these buildings, that information would really have been lost along with those buildings. So, such an ordinance would give an opportunity to those people interested in researching to actually have the opportunity to do that. Also, the demolition delay ordinance really will not apply to that many buildings in town, from how I understand it. It will affect very few people. And I agree with Brian that perhaps you should consider extending the demolition delay ordinance to buildings that are just 50 years old or older. That is actually the National Register criteria for listing on the National Register, and I believe also for your local historic preservation ordinance. It would keep everything in line and equal within the timeframes, rather than having confusion if something should be 50 years old or 75 years old. Like Brian said, also, the modern movement is now coming into the fore in terms of architectural history. And many people are very much interested in helping preserve some of the modern structures built from 1955, 1950s, 1947. Ranch houses and a lot of the other modern movement buildings are very, very popular and are becoming increasingly significant in terms of their architecture and deserve as much protection as an Italianate house. I'd just like to also say that by passing such a demolition delay ordinance, you would be giving the citizens of Urbana today and in the future a wonderful 175th anniversary present. As you all know, next year is your 175th anniversary, and I think it would be a wonderful present to help preserve those structures from the past onto the future. Like extinction, demolition is forever.
Thank you very much. Diana Visick? Tell me if I mispronounced your name again.
Hi, I'm Diana Visick. I live at 608 West Pennsylvania Avenue, deep in the heart of Wona. I'm commenting on this ordinance because my property would be subject to it. Although we have no plans for demolition, I'm concerned about some of its provisions. My first concern is that the definition of demolition as "any act or process that destroys in whole or in part the exterior of a building" is too broad. Many renovation projects, such as putting in additional windows or replacing a porch, involve "destroying" some part of the exterior. Although Section 7F says that "nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to prevent construction, repair, or maintenance activities," renovation is different from repair and should be specifically mentioned as an exception. My major objection is that this ordinance probably violates the Takings Clause, as Jack Waller, the city's former attorney, indicated in his memorandum of October 27, 2006. It's a basic premise in American law that private property cannot be taken without payment of just compensation. Although this ordinance only mandates a 45-day delay, it is specifically intended to allow time for submission of landmark applications, a process which could take a long time. Meanwhile, the property is in limbo. One can imagine a prospective buyer wanting the property only if a porch can be taken down in order to expand the kitchen. He has no idea if he'll be allowed to do so, and might be unwilling to wait the months that would be needed to go through the demolition delay and the landmark application process. He might easily choose to buy a property without these uncertainties. The situation is even worse for the seller, because this ordinance will reduce the pool of buyers interested in older properties and increase the time needed to sell. With fewer interested buyers, a seller is likely to get lower offers. And many people may be hesitant to buy an older home in Urbana once they know that selling will be more difficult. The net result is that property values go down, which is the opposite of the effect we're seeking. All of these factors make this ordinance likely to provoke a lawsuit, which would be a poor use of the city's time and money. I urge the council to find some other way to encourage historic preservation. One of the legitimate functions of government is to protect public safety, and Urbana has ample opportunities to focus on that issue. I've heard that every business in the Philo Road area has been robbed, except for County Market, which has its own security officers. I've also heard that one reason a major bank will be moving out of the area is the frequency of robberies. One of my friends was with her eight-year-old daughter when they were mugged in broad daylight in a drugstore parking lot on Philo Road. It's hard to persuade people to shop Urbana if they're afraid of crime. The city's time would be better spent addressing these essential government responsibilities rather than focusing on taking away property rights. Thanks.
There's some questions for you?
Sure.
Mr. Bowers.
Hi, Diana. Thanks very much for your input. I have one quick question about the first issue you raised about the definition being too broad. So, would it, I think, I certainly wouldn't want to impact anybody's ability just to do renovations, and I bet most of us wouldn't. Would it make sense if, if we change the text there to say "nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to prevent construction, repair, renovation, or maintenance"?
I think that would be, that would be much better.
Okay. I definitely wouldn't want to leave that loophole sort of out there.
Because there's a huge difference, a huge gap between construction and maintenance or repair.
Definitely. Thank you very much for catching that.
Any other questions? Great.
Thank you. Two people want to be recorded in support but do not choose to speak, Ed Dewan and Alice Engelbretson. Okay, next, Ilona Metkovsky.
Hi, my name is Ilona Metkovsky. I live at 412 West Elm in Urbana. I am here to support all three preservation issues tonight, and I would like to say a few words about the demolition delay. First, I strongly support the demolition delay ordinance. Currently, there is nothing protecting historic buildings in Urbana. When somebody submits a demolition request, the request is granted essentially automatically within five days. Because of this procedure, there have been many historically and architecturally important buildings destroyed in this city already. I feel that a demolition delay ordinance would give a chance to research buildings, both historically and architecturally, and provide some sort of protection for our historic and architectural treasures. Such research would also add significantly to the knowledge of our history, which is somewhat scant at this time for West Urbana and essentially nonexistent for East Urbana. It would also give us a chance to learn more about the architecture of our city. As recent research has demonstrated, there were significant architects in this city whose buildings we haven't known very well. And intensive research provided very, very much new information about these important architects, most importantly Joseph Royer, as well as Rudolph Gill. It's important that we know about these people, because these are the people that make our city significant, that make our city different from other cities. And these are the issues that lie at the heart of who we are and what we are, what our city is. Without the demolition delay, we really cannot go very much farther in protecting these buildings at this point. That's the essential thing that we need. Two things I would like to point out about the demolition delay as it is written right now. Unfortunately, the Tiff District is excluded. There are many residential buildings within the Tiff District. I know several on Elm Street, in the 300 block of Elm Street, which are architecturally and historically extremely important. There are several around the north edge of Boneyard Creek. And these buildings will have no protection by demolition delay at all, as the demolition delay is written. I think it would be good to include at least the residential buildings from the Tiff District in the demolition delay, and especially those that have been surveyed already. Several of these buildings have been surveyed, and the survey is the criterion, as it is right now, for West Urbana, West Urbana's protection by demolition delay. The second issue is, I think that setting up geographic boundaries would be much more appropriate than choosing particular buildings that have had surveys already. We don't have a list which buildings had surveys. We don't know which ones didn't, haven't been surveyed, so we don't know what we are excluding from the demolition delay at this point, which could be a real serious problem in the future. So, I think these two issues should be seriously considered. But I would just like to again emphasize that I strongly support the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Zagorski?
I live at 1605 South Race in Urbana. And in this draft of the ordinance is that during the period of 2001 to 2005, the city of Urbana has issued an average of 28 demolition permits per year, approximately one-half of which have been for single-family residents, some of which may have been eligible for designations as local historic landmarks. That's more than 100 possibly historic houses that we've lost in four years. So, I'm definitely for this ordinance. We can't pass it too soon. And then, the other thing is that it says here, "period of demolition delay, 45 calendar days following the submission of an application." Well, 45 days will go by in a flash. I think it ought to be a lot longer, because you want, you need time to find out about the building. And I think maybe it ought to be six months. And that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Stor.
I'm Chris Stor. I'm at 405 East High Street, and I represent the Historic East Urbana Neighborhood Association. Many of the previous speakers have made fine points in supporting the demolition delay ordinance. I can think of only one or two items that I might add. One is that the sort of structures that are going to be most affected by this ordinance are going to be those that have, are on the periphery, kind of the transition area between the urban core and our residential areas. These are sorts of places that people might have built a house and that had, that is worthy of inclusion in a National Register or as a landmark status. I agree that the 45 days is some time that's needed to research this, and I think that it served the city well. It also would allow the folks from PACA to make arrangements with the owner to salvage items in a house that, or a structure that would be demolished, to salvage architectural, architecturally valuable items that might be used to help improve or reconstruct other houses that, or structures that could use these.
Bernadine State?
Now, am I to speak on all three now, or just demolition?
This is just demolition.
Okay.
And that's what you put on your little blue form, but you can come back later and talk about the other topics.
Good. Okay, then I'll just talk about demolition. Well, I think you have here tonight a wonderful opportunity to help preserve Urbana. I was on the city council, and when we downzoned this whole area, and at that time, the area was zoned for much more, many more homes, I mean, many more apartments and all kinds of things. And so, we downzoned it. That was one thing that started helping. But now, you are doing many more things, which is really important. Demolition is incredibly important. In fact, in Galena, Illinois, where they have 85, I've told you this before, I know, 85 percent of their buildings on the National Register of Historic Places, they have a demolition delay ordinance. And they said they couldn't do it without the demolition. So, demolition delay is very, very important, because once they tear it down, that's the end of it. Let's see, what else? Well, I guess, everybody, everybody who has spoken, almost everybody, has, has been in favor of the demolition delay, and so I hope that you will all vote for a demolition delay tonight. I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alice Novak.
Hello.
Alice Novak.
Hello, Alice Novak, 601 West Delaware. I'd like to echo the sentiments that were given by Karen Comer of the Preservation and Conservation Association, and also Ilona Matkowski. I particularly am concerned about, I support the ordinance, but I would like for you to at least consider changing it to 50-year rule instead of 75-year. Several reasons for that. First off, it's in keeping with what the national standards are for National Register and other thresholds that we typically use in historic preservation. Second off, I live in a house that was built in 1933. I think anybody would be insane to demolish a house, but nevertheless, there are a number of properties in the south end of Woonah where I live, it was a much later developed area, and there are a number of properties that date from the later '30s, early '40s, and some even into the '50s that are still in keeping with the style that was typical and pervasive in that section of the neighborhood. So, I think we'd lose a number of properties. Also, kind of along in those lines, we have a number of historic fraternity and sorority houses that are in both of our communities, and these are rapidly disappearing, and I believe we've had at least one of these of topic on the section of Pennsylvania this year as well. Kind of the peak period for development for those was in the '20s and into the '30s, when we had the largest number of historic fraternity and sorority houses of any school in the country. We had 80 at one time. And so, I think, you know, by pushing the date to a 50-year consideration instead of 75-year consideration, we're allowing for those buildings to be considered as well. Some of them are on the National Register, which essentially provides no protection, but none of them is locally landmarked. One is locally landmarked in Champaign, but it's an area that's a pretty serious deficit because that represents a huge core of historic buildings in both of our communities. Also, as Ilona brought up, I would be concerned that residential properties in the Tiff District, particularly along Elm Street, would be excluded as well because it's one of our serious historic thoroughfares that we have in an older residential section of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Two people, Ralph Trimble and Carolyn Cassidy Trimble, are in support but do not choose to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to talk about demolition delay? If not, I'll, oh, Dennis Roberts.
Well, just to be fair, we were given a few missives via email or by other, in our packet, of people who also supported demolition delay, and one such is Louis Steinberg, who sent an email to the city. Another person was Leslie McClintock at 606 South Race. I received such a letter from Tyler Fitch, who lives at 503 East California. So, I just thought it would be fair to include those.
Yeah, similarly, I had a few that I just wanted to read off. I received correspondence from Joe Kibbie, who, whose address I forget, Lisa Trull at 714 West Iowa, who was supportive of demolition delay and the other two related issues, Sarah Metheny at 502 East Elm, supportive of all of them, and Laura Haber at 206 South McColla, in support of all of them.
I have one more.
Well, Mark Neder, who's the president of the Board of Education, would like to have governments excluded. I got an email from him. Is there anyone else? Charlie Smye?
There's a packet of seven emails on our desk. Linda, six in favor, Linda Lorenz, Jay Mittenthall, Suzanne Bachman, Sally Prunty, Perry Morris, Mickey Scheinman, and one opposed is T. Weston Haber. In addition, there are, I've got emails from Maria Ryan, Peggy Patton, and Thomas Nevens in favor of demolition delay.
Okay, if no one else wants to speak, we'll